Of the Planning Commission, I'd like to call the meeting to order.
Thank you, Cindy. We actually do not have our chair and co-chair with us tonight. And I think John was the only other planning commissioner that's run a meeting. So I did ask Jay personally today if he wouldn't mind. But to do that, the Planning Commission would have to make a motion to allow him to be chair tonight. If anyone would like to propose that motion, we can get started with our meeting.
You're not going to hurt my feelings if you reject it.
[inaudible]
Be chair. Okay. Everybody?
Aye.
Excellent. Say the meeting's yours. Congratulations.
Thank you, guys. Appreciate that. All right. So we'll call the meeting to order. And the first order of business is approval of the minutes from the February 5th, 2024 Planning Commission meeting. Any changes or alterations or deletions to those minutes? If not, I'll entertain a motion for approval.
I will make a motion to approve the minutes.
All right, I got a motion. Do I have a second to approve the minutes?
One second.
All right, I got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All right, hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. All right, the minutes are approved. Item number three is old new business. It is SD 22.05, Battle Trace Phase Eight, request of applicant Goodwin Mills and K Wood for an extension of six months for preliminary plat approval.
This is a standard request. We typically allow these the first time if everything is operating. Mike, so we've already had some calls about final inspection, so they're very close. Usually it's a one-year request. It's six months. Should be plenty of time to get it done. So standard, we recommend granting of the extension.
All right. Commissioners, any discussion on item number three? All right, hearing none, I will entertain a, I need a motion for approval.
I'll make a motion to grant an extension of six months for SD 2205 for Battle Trace Phase Eight.
Okay, I've got a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, I got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All right, hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. All right, request granted. Next item is discussion of medical uses.
So I'm going to save this, most of this conversation for the April meeting. We've got a few things to discuss. As y'all heard about, there's some conversation we need to discuss about the medical overlay, but then specifically some medical offices. And we want to define those a little better in our zoning ordinance. But with the number of commissioners out tonight, I do want to wait. We do have a new commissioner that should be joining us next week. So that'll be the ninth member, and that is Paul Fontenot. Some of you may know him, so we look forward to having him next month and hopefully have some good conversations about that. We may, we do not have any other official cases next month other than the proper maybe being back on. I have had a request for informal, but we should offer some time to actually talk about some amendments. So we'll move that one forward if that's okay.
All right. All right, moving on to consideration of agenda items. Item A is SD 24.01, public hearing to consider the request of the applicant Jay Consulting on behalf of the owner, Dominion Senior Living of Fairhope LLC for final plat approval of the reserve at Fairhope, a 169-unit multiple occupancy project. The project, the property is approximately 16.62 acres and is located on the west side of US Highway 98 between Volanta Avenue and Dyer Road.
Good evening. Mike Jeffries with the City of Fairhope. So as you just said, this is the MOP for the Reserve 169-unit multiple occupancy project. On the screen, on the left, you can see the zoning map. It is zoned PUD. On the right is the little outdated aerial. The site has been finished and is stabilized. Copy, this is the PUD-approved site plan. You'll see on the tile image, I have a haloed-out area where there was a pickleball court and bocce ball court. And we'll go into detail on that in just another slide or two. Just wanted to point that out for reference. The next slide, very similar. This is the as-built plan going back and forth. It has been built as the conceptual PUD site plan shown. Some general comments, the major infrastructure has been installed, completed. The applicant has proposed an alternative to the recreational area that was originally a pickleball court. Included in the planning commission packet was the plan showing the bocce ball court and an added pavilion to provide shade. We'll review that on the next slide. The landscaping has been reviewed and approved. The monetary contribution for the intersection improvements at Volanta Avenue and Greeno Road has been received. The applicant has provided an invoice for the pedestrian crosswalk signal on Volanta. Those were a couple of conditions from the preliminary approval. Just wanted to reflect that those have been satisfied. There has been an easement added on Greeno Road right-of-way towards the lift station as required by the sewer department. In the staff report, talked about an area that was currently under repair at the Hoyle Avenue entrance that has been completed and inspected and approved. And the applicant will provide a performance bond for the recreation area that we'll discuss tonight, as well as for some landscaping. This is the overall plan for the bocce ball court area. Blown up, left side, sorry, it's a little hazy, but that was where the pickleball court and the shuffleball, shuffleboard was going to be. On the right is a zoomed-in view of the bocce ball court shade structure and more of a detail of the pavilion. This was a revised detail, giving it a little more aesthetic appealing to it. Has the stone columns going forward and an architectural details around the top and an elevation view from the side. So this is what they are hoping on the right to build this as opposed to the pickleball court that was there after construction had started. It was in their best interest, they decided to have more of a bocce ball court than the pickleball court itself. Still a recreational area, still being used as an amenity. Some typical follow-up activities would be recording a copy of the MOP plan, copy of the recorded O&amp;M agreement, and the maintenance and guarantee agreement executed by the developer with some notes there. Staff's recommendation is to approve with conditions. One is completion of those follow-up activities, and two, that a replat is completed, creating one lot. That second condition is a routine item that is often done with these developments, mostly near completion, to remove lot lines that were multiple parcels or multiple lots of a development that is now one. But if there's any questions, I'll be happy to answer those on behalf of staff. And we have the applicant and the engineer with us tonight as well with Jay Consulting that can answer any questions.
All right. Commissioners, before I open the public hearing, I'll entertain questions or comments from the commissioners to staff, and then anyone who has questions for the applicant or engineer will handle those now, too. All right, not hearing any? All right, I will open up the public hearing.
Thank you for taking the temporary boost in status tonight. We appreciate that.
Happy to have it and more happy that it's temporary.
So we're concurrent, we're agreement with the staff's conditions, and the, we appreciate the Planning Commission's consideration of the alternate recreational area. So if you've got any other questions with that, I'd be glad to address them. Thank you.
Appreciate it. Commissioners, any other questions for the engineer at this point?
No.
All right, thank you, sir.
Just a quick detail, we want to make sure the concept is approved. We'll work with the final plans for the bocce and all of that at staff level and get those revised so they can get moving on that part of the project as well.
All right. Commission, hearing nothing further, I will entertain a motion at this point.
I make a motion to accept SD 2401 with staff's recommendation.
I'm sorry to interrupt. Did we?
You need to close the public hearing.
I did open the public hearing.
He did.
I need to close the public hearing. All right, last chance. All right, I will close the public hearing. Now I will entertain a motion. Thank you, sir. Keep me clean.
Do you want me to repeat?
Yes, please.
I make a motion to approve SD 2401 with staff's recommendations.
Okay, I've got a motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
All right, I've got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All right, hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion carries. All right, next item is SD 24.04, public hearing to consider the request of the applicant, the Woodlands Group LLC, acting on behalf of the owner, FST Odin Property Management and Investments LLC, for preliminary and final plat approval for the Pointevent subdivision, a two-lot minor subdivision of Lot 2, Pecan Orchard, Unit 1. The property is approximately .6 acres and is zoned R2, medium-density, single-family. The property is located at the southeast corner of Morphe Avenue and County Road 13.
Thank you, sir. Again, on the screen, the left side is the zoning map, the right side is the aerial. There is a residence located on what is the proposed Lot 2. The proposed subdivision does not create any non-conformities with this subdivision. On the screen is a blow-up of where those lot lines will be. Draw your attention to a utility easement running through the middle of that. And wanted to point out that that is a temporary easement only. There is currently, for the existing residence, overhead power to feed that house goes across there, so to not create an encroachment. We have, the surveyor did place an easement on there that will expire and be no of effect if that is to be relocated. And there is a 15-foot utility and drainage easement on the south property line and a 15-foot drainage utility easement that straddles the interior lot line. So if, whether they come from the north side off of Morphe to relocate that, or if they use an easement off of 13, those easements are available to relocate that, and that easement will be of no effect. There is also a 6-foot pedestrian easement being added to the Morphe side right-of-way. That is to capture an existing sidewalk that is currently there to allow for maintenance and items for that. There is not, there is not a sidewalk along County Road 13. The applicant is fully aware that as a condition of this subdivision, that sidewalk is installed, and we will not sign that final plat until that work has been completed and inspected. That owner has already been working with our Public Works Department on the placement of that. There is a little bit of uniqueness for the tie-in at the intersection. There's some utilities there, some drainage work that'll have to be done, but our Public Works and right-of-way guys have been working with them diligently to come up with a plan for that. All the lots are within 450 feet of a fire hydrant, meet the minimum lot requirements. We have been reviewed for a minor subdivision. There is no additional infrastructure improvements. Therefore, the tree protection landscaping plan and other criteria for a major subdivision is not applicable. For drainage, the existing flow patterns are not being changed. Water, sewer, and gas is provided by City of Fairhope. Riviera is the power provider, and AT&amp;T is the telecommunications provider. Again, another slide, there's where the sidewalk will go in the right-of-way, all the way down the western side of the property along County Road 13. Staff's recommendation is approval of SD 24.04, the Pointevent subdivision, with the following conditions, is the installation of sidewalk along County Road 13, the length of the property. And we do have Mr. Justin Palmer with the Woodlands Group here with us this evening to answer any questions on behalf of the applicant, and I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have on behalf of the staff.
Okay, all right. Before we open the public hearing, commissioners, any questions for staff or our engineer or applicant at this point? All right, hearing none, I will open the public hearing. Seeing no one, I will close the public hearing, and I will entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve SD 24.04 with staff's recommendations for installation of sidewalks along County Road 13, the length of the property.
All right, I've got a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
All right, got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All right, hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. All right, motion carries. Next item is SD 24.05, which is a public hearing to consider the request of applicant Goodwin Mills and K Wood, acting on behalf of the owner, Starlight Development LLC, for preliminary plat approval of the proper, a 10-unit multiple occupancy project. The property is approximately 1.68 acres and is zoned B1, local shopping district. The property is located at the southwest corner of Nichols Avenue and Young Street.
Just a little prelude to this one, I'm going to jump to our recommendation tonight real quick before we look at this. We are recommending tabling this. I give everybody, including our folks, a lot of attaboys for the hard work to be done here, but there is a, just an issue that has, dates back to 1946. So I do want to discuss the project. If there's anything else, I think it's, with all the hard work been put in, the applicant maybe deserves a little bit of feedback if we can provide it. But as you'll see, there is a reason we are asking to table this. Mr. Chairman, we do have enough time, so if the Planning Commission would like to open the public hearing and then table, we can do that. We do not need to withhold the public hearing if we want to have any feedback from neighbors. Okay? So this is B1 zoned property. It's multiple pieces, multiple lots. In the zoning ordinance, townhomes aren't allowed use in B1 property as long as they meet certain criteria in the townhome section of special conditions. So what you see on the screen is the site plan. This is 10 units, townhomes, and two blocks of buildings, if you will. They are meeting the zoning ordinance requirements in that special section. You know, then that deals with how, the undulation of buildings and fenestrations and rear yards and things like that. So parking, all of those things are, I'm going to kind of move through, but there is a waiver request here, and this is a little unique, about buildings fronting on publicly paved, maintained roads. Okay? This is two public roads on the north. I'm going to come back real quick so you can see that. On the north is Nichols Avenue, and on the east is Young Street. So there are two publicly facing roads. However, on this plan, on the south side, there is an Anderson right-of-way that shows up, and three of the units are facing that right-of-way. That is a right-of-way that looks like this today. I think that was a tree that came down through Sally. This is really the only major contention staff has right now, and it's, it's not necessarily a problem we have, it's an unknown still. So we have been trying to find information about Anderson Avenue for the month. We've been reviewing this, talked with the county. This is a plat, like I said, it was listed illegally as an unrecorded plat. No, this one is not, this is, yes. So a plat from 1946, but depending on where you look, that right-of-way is 15 feet, 16 feet, 20 feet. And I'm going to go back one more time because this is an important review procedure. There are multiple lots in this red area, and you can start to see some of those here that have access off this right-of-way that have never been built upon. And they've, a lot of those have been sold recently, so we foresee activity happening in the future. And as we review this with our Public Works, our city engineer, our utilities, a 20-foot right-of-way can be a challenge to get a, even as a single-use lane and utilities on. So the question was, with as part of a subdivision, do we require additional right-of-way? We asked that and tried to limit it as much as possible, but even five feet was really going to affect the setbacks and the applicability of this particular layout. So without knowing exactly what that right-of-way is, we're not comfortable with a recommendation of approval yet. We do want to do our own title search, have that done, a third party, and really dig into what is the exact width of that right-of-way? What do we need? We may come back with some suggestions on, once we find that information out, but I'll kind of run through the rest of the list. You know, all the landscape has been done, the utilities have been researched. There is a lot happening on this property. The Young Street side has high-voltage power lines, so trying to get overstoryed trees under those is a problem, but I think everybody's worked together to get the requirements in as necessary. You know, traffic sidewalks are on Young Street and will be installed on the Nichols frontage. We actually had so much on this one, we had a conflict resolution plan that showed where all the utilities are and the acquired landscape sidewalks, and we're able to verify this. Depending on what happens on the south side of the property, you see what looks like a pond. It's their detention area, not a traditional pond, but there is an outfall structure there. So we do want to at least acknowledge that, I think that outfall structure is shown right up to the edge of the right-of-way. Worst-case scenario, we're going to need a little room there to get utilities in, so we're going to need to look at that. It's, it's an outfall structure, it's riprap, as shown on the plans. So might have to get that redesigned a little bit, depending on what we find with the right-of-way. The O&amp;M plan is in place, the draft there, but with the unknown about that right-of-way, we do recommend tabling that. Let us reach out to a third-party title search and try to get some research, since this is such an old plat that has never really been acted on. And with that, we can answer any questions, certainly if there's any concerns from neighbors or anything like that, we can get those and maybe be able to address those if, before we come back to you. GMC is here if there's any questions from the engineer and planning team.
Sure. Thank you, Hunter. So obviously, we got a staff recommendation to table this, but obviously, I think the objective maybe here is to find out if the commissioners have any other issues that we need to address, maybe in that interim timeframe, assuming it does get tabled. And so I guess now's the opportunity for you guys to ask those questions and voice any other concerns to Hunter and Chris, and so that maybe that's something that we can look into.
I have just, just a generic concern of, I don't know if we've ever approved anything this close to such a large utility easement and the electricity and the, I don't know, I think of it as a, when I'm looking at it, who's going to want to look at that rather than look at Young Street? Seems like a better option, but the safety of it is a concern of, I don't know what that, what that means.
I'm certainly not an expert in that arena. We had a lot of conversation in the BOA case when the Morphe substation was, was put in. You know, that's certainly a question that maybe we could have some answers for, the proximity of a substation. There's certainly going to be noise. You know, I think anybody that moves into this has to understand that substation exists today. It's not going to move. It's renewed, so it's going to be there for a while. But if there's any information you can provide next month?
Okay. I'm Melissa Hadley with Goodwin Mills and K Wood, so I just wanted to sort of be here and be available since we are going to have discussion. But a couple of things I would like to point out is that there's been a lot of options, a lot of different options that were looked at on the layout. So one of the prime things that we were trying to do was save a lot of existing very mature trees that are on the site. So when you look at that site plan, if you don't mind, please pull on the site plan back up. You can see that we've saved almost, oh, is it on here? Okay, thank you. Appreciate that. Yeah. So there are a number of large mature trees that we worked around and have saved almost every tree on the site. So that was a big priority. So if we flip them in a different orientation, or if Young, or Anderson gets wider, a lot of those mature trees would have to be removed. So we thought that we found a solution that worked well within the ordinances and worked with a layout, worked well with the, with the developers' goals, and still maintained a really large part of the property as open space. There are three exist, or two existing roads, plus the new proposed road that will serve the property. So there's a lot of road available to this property already. And so Anderson Avenue was paved many, many years ago, so it's not in great condition as far as the asphalt goes. But there is an allowance in the zoning ordinance that allows for, or it's in the subdivision regulation, actually, but allows for a 20-foot wide right-of-way. And so given the fact that there are only a handful of lots that would actually ever front Anderson, this still could function in that width and be perfectly fine. Our townhomes are not going to have any vehicular access onto Anderson, so we would merely just have a sidewalk that extends out from the front of those townhomes. And then the other consideration that I want to point out is the, the really unique design of these townhomes themselves. So as you can see, the townhome has a courtyard in the backyard between the garage and a covered walk that would lead from the garage to the, to the unit itself. So there's a lot of really nice design features, things that are well and above what you would find with a typical townhome kind of development. We've left ample room behind each garage for there to be parking, so that there won't be parking on this, on the access drive. Then we've got the additional guest spaces, and then we designed this road sort of as a loop, the way it is, again, to save a large mature tree. So even when these townhomes are put in new, the added benefit of all of the existing townhome, or excuse me, existing trees and the large size will really give it a really good feel that works for an infill location. Obviously, we can't change the substation that's there, but that's, that's the thing that you go with when you have an infill location. You have to work with what's already existing. And so by being able to maintain those existing trees and add that buffer to adjoining neighborhoods by the generous open space, we're proposing additional sidewalk being built on Nichols Avenue on our side. There's plenty of utilities available already on the site. So we feel like there's enough positives to the design and to the orientation to justify the variance request of allowing this road to function as just a 20-foot wide lane. So that was why we put in the request for the variance. So I wanted to sort of highlight how we came about the layout that we're looking at.
Okay. Our commissioners, any questions for the applicant or engineer?
Is this a gated?
It will not be gated.
Okay.
We see this with a great location close to Thomas Hospital as, you know, potential workforce housing. So townhomes is a great use, it's an allowed use. We're not asking for any variance to anything like that. So this is a really nice addition right here.
Okay. Hunter, Chris, you guys okay with me opening the public hearing, or since we're tabling, or since we're considering tabling it, is that it?
Before we do, let's just talk about one quick thing, and then forever, Melissa, you as well. The Planning Commission can table something for one month. After that, the owner has to be in agreement. I'm not 100% sure, we certainly don't want to delay things any more than we have to, but getting a title search, how long does that take in this environment? I'm not 100% sure that can be done in 30 days. If we don't open the public hearing, we don't have to worry about that deadline unless the applicant is willing to allow us to table this until we get that title search back and can come back at the next available meeting to, to pick this back up.
Right. We understand that. You know, our survey did, you know, we went out and located everything in the field, so what's existing is what's shown there. So we feel confident about those improvements that are there as far as like locating the corners and things like that. I think that that 20-foot right-of-way is probably going to hold, but as Hunter pointed out, there's been some discrepancies about that width and where it actually is or whatever. But just to reiterate, we're not planning to use that as vehicular access at, at any point for this development. We're just going to have the sidewalk that will come out, and we're even going to be able to bend those sidewalks as needed so that we can avoid those trees that are along that north line.
All right.
I also want to point out, too, that there is an existing home on the corner. Does this have a pointer? I just want to be able to point.
He needs the mouse.
Okay. If y'all can, there we go. Right here, this lot right here, just to the south of Anderson Avenue, there is a home, existing home that sits there, and widening again would be disruptive to that existing home potentially.
Okay. All right, but just so, so we're clear, if I open this public hearing, then there is a 30-day option for this to be tabled, after which, if you don't agree, then it's got to go forward in 30 days. Is that correct?
The options would be either the applicant agree to table it today for more than 30 days up, I mean, assuming the title search comes back, it's conceivable that it could be on next month's agenda. But if the title search took longer than 30 days, the applicant would need to agree to the timeframe that we need to set tonight, setting forth if it's going to be tabled for 30 days, if it's going to be tabled until the title search comes. for 30 days, if it's going to be tabled until the title search comes back, or 60 days to be safe. And so your options would be, don't open the public hearing, and we can come back next month, and then if the title search still isn't done by then, y'all have the ability to table it for 30 days, or we can get permission or agreement from the applicant now to postpone it until the title search comes back.
So I think I got a little confused. We can table it, it's already been proposed to be tabled by the count, by the planning staff?
Correct, but the clock doesn't start until the public hearing is open.
Until the public hearing opens. So what you're asking is whether or not we agree to open the public hearing?
Whether you agree to table it for more than 30 days if necessary.
Oh, if that's, if that's needed while you're waiting on the title search, that's certainly reasonable.
Okay.
All right, then that's fine. So we can open the public hearing and then agree to table it until the title search has been completed?
Correct.
Okay. All right. Well, hearing that, I will now open the public hearing. Lot less dramatic than I was anticipating. All right, I will close the public hearing. Commission, we've got a request from staff to table, I will entertain a motion at this point.
And just as a suggestion, to clarify what's transpired, if you were making a motion, I would make a motion to table based upon the consent of the applicant until the title search can be completed and put it on the next available planning commission meeting once that opinion is received.
Okay, I'm going to give it a shot. I make a motion that we, with the agreement of the applicant, table SD 2405 for the amount of time that is necessary for the title search to come back, and in accordance with staff recommendations.
Okay. Got a motion? Do I have a second?
Second.
All right. Chris, Hunter, y'all good with that?
I think they're good.
All right. All right, I've got a motion and a second then. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Item D is SD 24.06, public hearing to consider the request of applicant Dewberry acting on behalf of the owner, Tommy Thomason, at AL, for preliminary plat approval for Montrose Preserve PUD Phase 1, a three-lot major subdivision. The property is approximately 8.94 acres and is zoned as a PUD planned unit development. The property is located on the west side of Greeno Road and south of Sibley Street.
Okay, thank you. It's Michelle Melton, staff. Okay, so Dewberry is the authorized agent, and they are here tonight, and like the temporary chairman said, it's a three lots, they're estate size, the PUD itself has five phases, it'll be 18 estate lots potentially. The setbacks fall under the R1 single-family residential requirements, unless they're otherwise referenced on the proposed site plan, which they're not for this go-around. Jason Estes is the engineer of record, and he's here, and this is reviewed based on the subdivision regulations. So that is what it looks like. You guys have seen it before, this is actually the Phase 1 with the three lots. There's your site data, total of 8.94 acres. And the utilities, Daphne, it's kind of all over the place, it's interesting, but Daphne's doing the water. The Phase 1 for sewer will have septic tanks that shall be approved by the Alabamian Department of Public Health. Those applications are in the packet, if you want some fun reading. Revere Utilities is providing electricity and communications is provided by AT&amp;T. Traffic study wasn't warranted for this, and no sidewalks are being stalled in this phase, but there is a 20-foot utility and pedestrian easement along Third Street, which you'll see in the site plan. So the site and drainage, this is from Dewberry deciding, the existing site is comprised of undeveloped woodlands with sandy clay soils, it has a gentle slope from the north, and increases along the most southern lots, so the drainage and narrative calculations are there below, and it has been determined that the impact from the development to the runoff volume for the watershed is negligible, and is our opinion that attenuation of the runoff is not necessary. So that's the math. There's not any landscaping for this phase, there has been an inventory of trees of DBH of 20 inches or more on the Third Street right-of-way, and easements has been provided, along with this tree protection plan for the trees that are supposed to remain. It's interesting here, because currently that Third Street right-of-way is under the jurisdiction of Baldwin County, so that's something that has to happen eventually, so our tree ordinance doesn't kick in until the city of Fairhope accepts that right-of-way. So we updated these from when the staff reports came out and published. So we do recommend this be approved with the following conditions: Please add pedestrians to 20-foot utility easement on the boundary survey and plat, I think it's missing on one. Any outside agency permits, whatever they may be, are required, shall be obtained prior to submission of any, application of any building permits, and the fire flows shall meet the International Fire Code standards at the time of final plat, and the engineer shall provide confirmation with that. And also, Hunter asked me to look into the buffers from the, I did, and just to reiterate it, just to be said out here, the buffers, this is in the ordinance from the amendment in 2022, all buffers labeled on the site plan shall remain natural, with the exception that where a visual buffer does not exist, buffer plant materials shall be installed.
The only reason I want to make sure, the note on the plat does have a buffer next to the cemetery, we did get some questions about that. It is not just a 20-foot buffer that shall remain, it was actually even from the
Earlier, earlier one.
77 lot PUD, that that was going to, the landscape there is going to remain to provide a visual screen. So we just want to make, we'll get that note added to the plat before final plat, but just want to make note of that tonight. And also note, this makes a condition of a potential PUD amendment as part of this application, they also provided us with a schematic design for how water utilities are going to get through the remaining lots, so we will add that plan to the PUD and close out that, that's kind of an outstanding amendment at city council, that will close the book on with approval of this first phase of Montrose PUD.
All right. All right, commissioners, any questions, comments, or concerns at this point, for either staff, or applicant, or engineer? All right, hearing none, I will open up the public hearing.
I'm Jason Estes with Dewberry. We are agreeable to the staff recommendations, conditions, and I can answer any questions you may have, if you have any.
Commissioners, opportunity for questions to applicant or his engineer?
Quick question, lot three seems to have an extreme drop-off, is it still going to be buildable?
Yes, sir, it's probably, considering the size of the lot, it's probably not as bad as it looks.
You kind of move the house up to the north where it's a little flatter?
Yes, sir.
All right, thank you.
And we did discuss, I think, that some of the road access there was even brought, you know, from the, from the north, didn't connect at that intersection, so there was some changes. Just some of the past conversations we had, there's a buffer required at Grand Greeno, but there's also, I think it's Alabama Power Line, if I'm not mistaken, so Dewberry has mapped those out, where those actually are, and the, those buffers were actually amended slightly, so a lot of those questions were answered, in case anybody's wondering.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Barry Booth, I'm the Jason Property Engineer.
Please, if you don't mind, just so those watching at home can hear you.
Ma'am? Yes, ma'am. I'm Barry Booth, I'm at Block 16, from Chapman to Third, to Second, to Taylor.
We just need to add, we're melding.
Post Office Box 1, Montrose.
Thanks, sir.
We want to make sure that the, there's no further subdivision availability for the three lots on this particular block.
That's a good point. To address that, this does have a PUD, so the zoning map has been amended to include, this is three lots. I can't promise that nobody will ever propose anything different, but that PUD would have to be amended, then subdivisions would have to be proposed, that is in no way, shape, or form being proposed, we have heard no conversation about this. I think everybody's ready to build three houses on these three lots. So, but the PUD protects that, the zoning map protects that from being, just go have a family subdivision exemption or a regular subdivision proposed.
Right. And then, is there any declaration for opening a Third Street from Chapman to Taylor with regard to the corner lot there?
To Taylor, so a major component of this PUD was not connecting to Taylor and a few other streets. Access to these three lots will, it's not going to be a major public road, we've really worked, I think Dewberry's worked to mitigate as much as possible, but Ch, Third Street kind of has a unique road today, that will continue as a lane back to these three lots, so it will not be a
From Taylor?
From, no, from Third Street, it would be an extension from Third Street, Third Avenue. The kind of end right now, where the turnaround is, that will move further south, so Taylor will not have a road connection.
So you'll not be able to get from Chapman to Taylor on Third, is that correct?
That is correct.
Not with this.
No, not with this, no. That is correct. And Jason can
Larry, clarifying, if this come up?
You're looking, here's Chapman, here's Taylor, you're asking about, this is you, that's what you're asking about, this will be, you'll be coming in from Sibley down to access these lots from the north, so it will not connect right here, which right now is not connecting anything right here either.
And
This is just right here.
And what's proposed from Taylor to Chapman on Third?
Nothing is proposed right now. Now, the overall PUD has a different system of roads, but that's not what this is tonight. What, tonight, all we're looking at is these three lots on this phase for this section up here, and it all comes in from here and stops right here before you ever get to Chapman.
And are there any utilities planned for?
The water line runs down here and ties it to the six-inch line here.
And the water line's going to be in the easement or on private property?
It's on private property, in an easement on their property, it's not in the right-of-way.
And Jason, we did hear from Daphne, I believe they are planning on upgrading the water line on Taylor, that will be coming back and looping in, but that is not opening up Taylor for access.
Correct.
And we did get a comment, and I don't know the answer to it, we did get a comment of making sure where the water line does not impact the trees on Taylor, that's outside of this subdivision. Again, not something we can address right now, that'd be something to work with Daphne Water, to work through that improvement.
Okay, but you do anticipate a six-inch line from Taylor to Sibley?
All the way to here. I see you're up there.
Yeah.
It'll run from tunnel to that one, and coming up here and running down to here.
Right. And any proposed further subdivision, will it have to come before the planning commission, is that correct?
No, it would have to come before, well, I'm sorry, yes, it would come through the planning commission, but also through the city council, as a zoning change before it could do a subdivision. Now, for this particular phase, that, there's obviously more lots allowed in the PUD, and further south.
Right, to the south.
But any, any re-subdivision of these three lots would have to first have a zoning amendment changed that would go to planning commission and city council, sir.
But that's, you don't have any proposed subdivision like that, do you, Larry? Any further subdivision of any of these three lots?
No, the 18 lots.
Is what you're going to stick with?
May not even be it, too.
Right. Okay, I believe that answers my question.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, seeing no one else, I will close the public hearing, and open it back up to the commissioners, any further comments or questions, and if there are none, I will entertain a motion.
Yes, and please do, do note that, sorry, I know, the three conditions are different from your packet, there was a little bit of revision, I think one of them stated something about the county and their agreement, the county's done everything they need to do, we will be bringing the right-of-way acceptance to the council in short order. So the conditions, as we're proposing, are on the screen, so if anybody would make the motion and read those three, I'd hate to ask for that, but if you'll just read those three, it's our request.
Mr. Chairman, is it okay for me to ask the engineer one question before we do that? Are we still open? You had said that there, Daphne's going to upgrade a six-inch water line coming there, is that correct?
They're tying on to the six-inch line.
They're tying?
Six-inch, oh.
So you're going to have a six-inch line in front of these, in front of these lots?
Yes.
Okay, okay. I was thinking about fire flow, but they should be plenty with a six-inch line.
Do we know anything about the ingress and egress of Adams and Chapman?
See if I can figure out the question. We do. None will be continuing down Third Street as currently proposed. There is, if you recall, there was a discussion on the next three lots, could potentially be three lots, or maybe one lot, so there is potential for access there, but is it, is Chapman the one that will come off of Green?
So Adams won't have any, there's, they're not planning any access on Adams, and it won't be improved.
So that will not connect to 98?
So Chapman, is that the one that lines up
The one that eventually is Taylor, which is the one that eventually ties into, across from Rock Creek, in the, as far as the PUD goes, but that's not what we're looking at tonight, but as far as
Taylor?
I don't
You mean Chapman?
So, no, look at, here's, this is the PUD, so upside down, so they're looking at, okay, so Adams here will not connect, the only access up to 98 will be eventually when this ties in here. This is not planned.
And
This is the access that they're looking at, and he said that's what he was talking about, it could be
Okay.
Does that make sense?
That's not on our
It's not a part of this phase or the subdivision.
I'm just looking ahead.
Yep. We got it. That was the, the PUD did address those.
All right. I will, assuming there are no further questions, I will entertain a motion at this point.
I make a motion to approve staff recommendations of approval of SD 2406. Staff recommendations, number one, please add pedestrian to the 20-foot utility easement notations on the boundary survey and plat. Number two, any outside agents' permits required shall be obtained prior to submission of building permits. Do you want me to put the AlDOT, Baldwin County, ATM, et cetera? And number three, fire flows shall meet International Fire Code standards at the time of final plat, engineer shall provide confirmation with final plat application.
All right, I've got a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
All right, I've got a motion and a second, any further discussion? All right, hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. All right, motion carries. I think that's it. I think that's it, so I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
All right, I got a motion to adjourn, do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Meeting is adjourned.